Okay, we'll start with councilman reports. Councilman Brandon Watson, do you have anything that you would like to report on?
Um, good evening. Spent a month in Georgia for the holidays, but came back immediately to three meetings. The following day, at first was the state of the state lunch with the governor, which seemed to be pretty well attended. It was interesting to hear what she had to say. Serving as our representative on Chamber of Commerce, there's some really good events coming up. I'll bring you to the next meeting, some of the dates and specific details on a couple of them. But in February, just to give you a little heads up, they do have a tasting event, a food tasting event, which sounds like it's going to be really interesting, and I would encourage you to consider attending that. That's all I really, oh, I served on the committee for, or the board, freeholders board, and we concluded our work this last week and are anxious to get that before the voters. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. How's Romack?
Um, thank you, Mayor. My wife is a freeholder, and so I support her. That's all I have.
Councilman James?
Yeah, since we met last time, from what I understand, probably the most well-attended Christmas in the park parade. What I heard, I was really well done, put on nothing but positive reviews from what I heard. And then Patriot All America took place during the twenty eighth through the thirty first. And most successful, most well-attended event. It's really, really continuing to step up every year in the, uh, some of the bigger sponsors that are involved with that, like USAA and the Thunderbirds are really taking it to the next level. So it's pretty exciting for the, not just for the West Valley, but for the city and for what's happening there. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue?
Me? Is that my name?
It is.
Okay. Um, I don't know. I think, because this happened in November, I might have said it last time, so I'm going to repeat it if so. But I wanted to congratulate the Litchfield School District where they were ranked with fourteen out of sixteen schools A-rated. So not only do we have an awesome community, but we have awesome schools. And I want to give a special shout out. They are now, have moved on, but certainly Jody Gunning and her team, that were really the drivers of that, and then to support the new team that's coming in. But I think that's really, really awesome. Secondly, attended the Christmas luncheon, and I just have to say, it was a blast. And I just think it was awesome for you guys to bring everybody together in that setting. I mean, we had the whole group there making gingerbread houses, and I think it's really awesome when you guys do that. So keep, keep doing that in that fun setting, fest, fun festive setting. I also want to mention the freeholders in that I attended one meeting, and it happened to be last week at the Wigwam. And I just sat back and I just looked at that slate, and I thought, okay, we have to have had the most qualified, incredible, unbelievably talented freeholders committee ever. I mean, it was just unbelievable to see all the people that are sitting there, including those that weren't voted in. We know some of them, and it was amazing that that many people stepped up. And I just have to say, I think the future of Litchfield Park is certainly in good hands. There are a lot of young citizens that came out, but it was unbelievable to see everyone that participated. So thank you, because I know it was really hard work. Anyway, that's all.
Claire? I'm gonna steal one of Ann's things. She usually talks about the, the lighting that we did downtown for the Christmas in the park was spectacular. And it got amazing amount of comments from the citizens and how happy they were with that. That's something that we literally should look at, lighting the city up a little more instead of just a Christmas. That's something we should look at doing on a regular basis, because it, it made an amazing difference. And all the feedback I got from people was, why can't we do this more? It just, it looked beautiful. So kudos to the public works that got that together and the outside team that we did. Amazing. The Patriot All American was fortunate enough to get to play in that again and, uh, and go to that event. That event just keeps getting bigger. That's a signature event for this town. And the Mavericks should be proud of what they've done with it and how much they've grown and what they've done with it. That's, it's an amazing event, and you can see how much it affects those kids that come out here and play in it. And that's it. It's just nice to be here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I apologize for not being there, but I have whatever the most current disease is that's going around. It's unnamed. But the comments that have been made by the council members about a lot of the events I was at, it was a great time. With our citizens, our committees, they've all done a wonderful job putting these programs together, and they're a real benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to echo some comments that have already been made. The Patriot All American was truly an incredible tournament. It, I had the pleasure of attending the first Patriot All American, and I can tell you that there was almost no resemblance, other than the open, opening ceremonies are always great, but everything else has, has gotten so much better. And it involves so many members of not only our community, but we have, we had volunteers coming in from the east side of the town, coming in to volunteer to work that tournament, which is, it's amazing that that happens. So hopefully the Mavericks will be able to keep running that every year and keep it, keep it growing. Uh, I also want to thank the charter group, the free, the group of freeholders. I was fortunate to attend a few of their meetings, and I, I went to their, their public hearing at the Wigwam with, Councilman Donahue, and it, it was very positive. I would say all the comments that were received by the public were very positive. There were a few suggestions, and the freeholders met after the meeting and actually took some of them into, into account and made, made some wording changes in the charter. Uh, they brought it back the next night, and I was at that meeting, and they adopted then the, the final verbiage for the charter. And it was a unanimous vote. It was a tremendous, tremendous committee that, that represented a cross-section of our, our little city. From every age group to every, every type of person, as you can imagine, somebody who, you know, who works with his hands and somebody who's, uh, who's a doctor or an accountant or a lawyer. So it was, uh, it was a very good, a very good effort by these people. I want to particularly recognize the efforts of Paul Charnitsky. Paul was, was elected the chairman of that group, and he did, he did a tremendous job at, recruiting some people to run for the, for the, for the, for the freeholder spots. So he helped fill the committee, and he did a tireless, he was tireless in working on the charter itself to make sure we ended up with the best possible product. And I think the citizens will be very, very appreciative of it once they have the ability to read the entire charter. And the, the vote will be something that's incredibly important in the history of, of Litchfield Park. So it's where we're literally seeing history made with this charter. There, there are only eighteen other cities that have charters, right, nineteen? The last charter was adopted nineteen eighty-two, I think. So it, it's, it's really a tremendous milestone, not only for us, but also for the state of Arizona. I think other cities will see that you can successfully put together a charter, and we'll see more charter cities across the state. So I want to recognize them. With that, we'll go on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Um, it's been about two months since we've seen you guys, so good to see everybody. I don't want to echo things that have been said, but I think staff really stepped it up as far as Christmas decorations. It did a great job. From what I hear, you could see our Christmas tree downtown from, from Ariel. So we had some great shots of that, and it just looked so much better. And there were a lot of changes people didn't realize, such as going to the flagpole decorations from the poinsettias in the past, and nothing but good comments on our Christmas lights. So thank you again to our staff and the Christmas light committee did a great job with that. Also, for Tricia and her staff, it's, it's a busy time at Christmas with the Christmas parade and contests and events. And of course, they had our own, they get the gathering this past weekend. It's a busy time, and thank you for everything you guys do. When you see events that have ten, fifteen thousand people attend with that, and golf without a hitch, it really says something for the staff that puts it together. That doesn't just happen. They golf that smoothly. So again, thank you guys for everything that you do. You may have noticed as you go through town that Village Parkway is coming together. It's very close to being done. They're at the connection at the church at Litchfield Park to Old Litchfield Road. It's been a lot of progress there. Also, the extension of La Loma there beside City Hall is being cut in. So you'll see that if you're driving by Wigwam, it's hard to miss that, that construction is being done. So a lot of good progress on that, but John, we'll talk more about that later. Also, city facilities have made a huge step forward in security in the past few months. We now have camera systems in our city facilities and also badge systems in all our city facilities. Where before we all had PIN numbers, that's a big step forward in our security and for our employees' safety. We've also started the paycorps system for payroll. That's a nice change for us, and it's made things much easier for staff. And that's going to have a good savings for us, too, and we'll report back on that once we have a final number on that. Uh, thank you, those of you that attended the ACC meeting. You know, of course, how that went, and I will be there at the February meeting. And we'd also like to thank, well, she's not here, but Commissioner Tovar with ACC for really standing up and trying to fight for the city with this issue. We appreciate that. And I would encourage any residents that can, please attend that meeting on February the sixth at Arizona Corporation Commission involving Liberty, and we'll be there to represent the city again. And also, we are working with Liberty to test our fire hydrants and use our own car, to use our own contractor between now and that meeting. So we'll keep you posted on how that goes. As always, I welcome questions if there are any at this time.
Any questions from council? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to see you back in the city and back in the saddle. That's all good. All these are over yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, response to call the community from last meeting. I don't believe we have any responses. Is that correct, staff? Mr. Staff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I responded personally to the person that came with the council before about the flagpole and letting them know that will be part of the downtown electrical upgrades. We'll be replacing that light at that time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us to this meeting's Call the Community. It's an opportunity for, for individuals to speak to the council on a non-agenda item. Uh, there's, there are forms to fill out if you want to speak to us. At this point, I don't have any forms, correct? But not for Call, Call the Community. Okay. So is there anyone who wants you to address the council on a non-agenda item? All right, we'll move on. First item is presentation of, a proclamation on stand-up. So if I can figure out how to use my, all my paperwork here. Yes, the first proclamation is a proclamation that helps bridge the gap between young people, our local community government, and, and law enforcement in a positive way. Uh, it is in the packet. I only want to, I want to highlight the fact that there are a hundred and nine, a hundred and sixty-nine public charter, private, and tribal schools in Arizona, and that they have created student-led impact projects in their schools and communities that have impacted more than five hundred thousand students. So this proclamation highlights that and asks the citizens of, of Litchfield Park to recognize that Arizona's schools, students, parents, educators, police departments, and community organizations are coordinating a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer and to promote a healthy environment for all our children and adolescents. At the same time, I also want to recognize or recognize the Avondale Police Department. We've been very fortunate in that we have a school resource officer that is now stationed at Litchfield Elementary School, full-time for the most part. The officer leaves to do some duties outside the school on occasion, but for the most part, they're able to have their desk at the school and, and the students are able to interact with the, with the police officer in a very positive way. So thank you to the police force for, for engaging in that activity on our behalf. We appreciate it. Uh, the other proclamation is an anti-human trafficking proclamation. This is a proclamation that has gone in various forms around the, around the state. It is an effort by, by communities such as Litchfield Park to recognize the impact of human trafficking, uh, the fact that it is a plague on our society, and it affects millions of people each year. We are encouraging all residents of Litchfield Park to be cognizant of the, the tremendous toll that hu- human trafficking takes on our society. We're urging people through their churches, their schools, their businesses, to work together to eliminate track of trafficking from our community and to encourage law enforcement to continue the battle against it, both in the community and, and in the state. But that proclamation is also in, is also on the website and, and in the public packet. Next item is reports, reports. We have a report first from Goodyear Fire Department. All right. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were here to accept one of the proclamations. Okay, great. That was, that's what Shelley requested. So you were on behalf of Shelley?
I guess.
So excuse me, I have a deal for, or I'm. We appreciate all the stuff that you guys do for the community. It is important. I don't know if we want to get a little picture here?
Yep.
At every time you ask, the city, you can be obliged, just so that's very gracious.
One second, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for, for your service. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go on to Goodyear Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tim Wayne from Goodyear Fire, here to present on November, December numbers for our activities in regards to development services and response. I'll start off with development services and what we did with staff completed in the month of November. Uh, one special event inspection and then forty-one OCMC inspections for the month. In December, we saw staff complete one plan review, one construction permit, and then ten OCMC inspections. Emergency response for the month of November, we saw a total call volume of seventy-eight, thirteen percent increase from the previous year of that month, in which one of those was a fire that actually was a gas leak. Saw sixty-five EMS calls, one hazardous condition, one call to service, five good intent, and then five false alarms. Uh, month of December was considerably busy, busier for a couple of different reasons. Uh, one of those was a fire turned about small in nature, electrical, and no extension into the, the structure. Seventy-one EMS calls, one hazardous condition, one good intent, sorry, seven good intent, and then six false alarm calls for totally seven. Uh, it looks like we're on track to exceed last year's number by approximately a thousand. So we'll continue to monitor and, and see how that presents as, as we move forward. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from council? Looks like no questions. That's good.
That is good. That's my favorite.
Thank you for your service for our community.
Thank you. We're proud to serve this community.
All right, that takes us to the report from the Avondale slash Litchfield Park Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Jonathan Martin, Avondale Police Department. I brought some of our officers. I just wanted to, every quarter, I'm, uh, start bringing the officers so you can see who's out here every day, who you interact with, who's actually doing the work. Not me, I don't do the work. I just get to glory. So you got Officer Kendall and Sergeant Emmett, Lieutenant Rio, so those are the three main officers that, uh, handle all the business of Litchfield Park. So bring them by. You guys can say hello and if you have any questions, they'll answer them for you.
Great.
So I'm gonna present some of the statistics from the November, December quarterly or, uh, stats for you. In November, we had two, we responded to two hundred and ninety-four calls for service, had seventy-three business checks, and we had twenty school zone details and speed zone details. We did have one flock alert in the month of November where the flock alerted us to a missing person. Officers were able to locate this person in the area of Camelback and Denny Boulevard. Person was an elderly person. They were missing. We contacted them, made sure they were good. There was no issues with them. They were healthy. We let their family know, and they were taken out of the system. So the flock did its job. That's what we like to see the most, is something like that. So it was this, one of the other many successes of our flock system. November, also, we had fifty-one traffic stops. We issued thirty-nine traffic warnings and twelve citations. And again, we had that one flock alert. Any questions on November? Jump to December for you. We responded, our officers responded to three hundred and four calls for service. Again, we had sixty-four business checks, sixteen school zone details, and ten, uh, speed zone details. So again, it was a little bit slower school zone details because of the, obviously, the school being out for some of the month. We had, we responded, increased our traffic stops a little bit from November up to sixty-five traffic stops. We had thirty, uh, sorry, I don't have my readers on. We had fifty-two warnings, and we issued seventeen citations. And we didn't have one flock alert for the whole month of December, which is kind of unusual. Maybe it's a good thing. Bad people staying out of the area. And then that, that's all I have for you.
Questions from council?
Any questions?
A question. This is the same general question that I asked last, last time we were together. I still am getting a lot of complaints from people who live in, in the greens along Camelback Road.
Yeah.
Particularly late at night with racing cement trucks, a lot of engine braking going on. It, you know, literally is waking people up at four or five o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
So I, I don't know how many of these traffic citations relate to activities late at night on Camelback, but I would like to have you bring that information when you come back on, uh, next month.
Okay, on Camelback or Litchfield Road, Mr. Mayor?
Camelback, yeah. Camelback to the, uh, to the west of Litchfield Road.
Okay.
It's actually, you know, along where the greens are, as you get, there's a little hill there.
Yes.
Both going both directions. We have a lot of trucks, a lot of trucks are using engine brakes, engine braking, and they're speeding. So we need, you know, we need enforcement in that area to try to get them to understand that, that it's, there is no engine braking permitted in the city, and it's a thirty-five mile an hour zone, and we, we would like to have it enforced.
Absolutely. We'll do that, all those stats for you, and then we'll go ahead and increase our officer presence even more so. I do think the electronic signs are long Camelback and on Litchfield Road. I believe it felt tremendously. You guys can attest to that, the electronic signs. So I think I drive down there daily, so I think it's benefited. So we'll have those numbered for you.
I, I drive on Camelback quite a bit, and I can, I believe that the speed on Camelback has slowed down dramatically. It's much more likely to see somebody doing forty or forty-five as opposed to sixty.
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's tremendous the amount that it's slowed down. But I'm not driving on that road at four o'clock in the morning.
Correct.
That's the complaint. Because I'll, I'll make that comment to people. They'll say, well, you know, I live in the greens. I was, well, how's, how is it? Because it seems to me like it's slowed down. And that just like a volcano erupts, you know, it hasn't slowed down a bit, you know, we still have all this noise and waking us up all night. And it's, all the complaints literally that I'm getting are from, from late at night.
Okay, absolutely. We'll increase our presence for sure. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
No other questions? Thank you very much, council.
All right, next item is a report from staff for our finance. Listen, my, my sidekick, did I miss something?
Nope.
All right, good. So finance.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight I have the finance report through December. Um, I'll start with our sales tax report. Uh, this December over last December was, is nine percent higher. Um, year over year, uh, is twelve percent higher. Uh, we had a pretty big gain in online sales of forty-three percent increase. Rentals are down forty-nine percent, but that was an adjustment that was made. And then construction sales tax is down seventy-two percent, um, this December over last December, and overall down twenty-seven percent, but we're still in line with what we, um, budgeted for construction sales tax. And that's all I have regarding sales tax unless there's any questions. So I'll move on to the complete finance report. Um, our revenues overall through the end of December are just over eight point three million or at fifty-five percent of budget. So we're, revenues are coming in five percent over budget. Our general fund expenditures, um, were just, just under six million dollars or forty-eight percent of budget. Um, we do have some departments that are just over fifty percent. There are some bigger one-time expenses that we've paid. Um, I think most of those will smooth out. If not, I might be bringing, um, a budget adjustment to you in a few months. Um, our construction sales tax collected is just under four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Uh, we did receive a payment from Maricopa County Flood Control for, um, the Storm Drain Project, just under one point nine million. And we've spent, um, roughly two hundred and forty-eight thousand on capital projects, which brings our ending fund balance at just over thirty point five million. The detail for, um, rec and special events is included in your packet. I won't go through that unless anybody has any specific questions. Moving on to our special revenue funds, our HERF revenue is just over two hundred and fifty-six thousand or at forty-eight percent of budget. So HERF is, um, coming in under about two percent. Um, we've spent, um, just over nineteen thousand out of the HERF funds. That leaves an ending fund balance of just under one point one million. Moving on to Litchfield Square, um, invoices paid.
Question on HERF before I go. Uh, I think the city engineers here, do we have, are we going to spend this HERF, HERF money we have? Are we going to spend our, this balance this year?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of projects and.
And so at the end of the year, we're going to have a hundred thousand that reserve or less?
That's it all.
Yeah. Good.
Thank you. The only fund that we want them to really spend down. The only fund we really want spent down is the HERF fund.
Yes, we want HERF spent down. Do not want it sitting there for the state to take it back.
Um, our Litchfield Square expenses are just over four point seven million or at forty-seven percent of budget. Um, that leaves an ending fund balance of just over four point eight million. That would be the bond proceeds of eleven point five million. That's what's remaining. The streetlight improvement districts, the revenues have started to come in, so their revenues are right at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Expenses are at a hundred and thirteen. Um, the court enhancement fund, and we've collected thirty-three hundred. We've spent thirteen thousand five, and that leaves an ending fund balance of just under sixty-eight thousand. Which brings us to our total fund balances. Um, total fund balance with all funds is thirty-six point five million, um, with thirty point five of that in the general fund. Um, I just want to point out that the unassigned fund balance of twenty-four point three million, that does include the three point five million we received from Maricopa County for Camelback Road improvements. And we also have some potential future expenses that could spend this down, such as the Hilltop Restoration for nine hundred thousand, and then the completion of Litchfield Square of ten million. And that, um, concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from council? Uh, just one question. Uh, the, the debt service for the, the series twenty twenty-three bonds is shown at thirty-five percent of the budget as opposed to fifty. Is, is there something you're doing differently in the accruals on that?
No, wait, we, um, adopted the budget. We had to adopt the budget before we actually issued the bond. So that was an estimate on the payment, eight hundred and fifty.
So the eight fifty is, is going to be less?
Yes.
Good. All right. That's, no, I thought you were, you were going to tell us that our city attorney's budget is going to go down, too.
I promise me it's out of time.
Okay. All right, next item for report is the contamination or plume update for PGA North or the PFOS at Luke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good to see everybody after the New Year. Beginning with the PGA North. Beginning with the PGA North Superfund site, the PGA staff sampled the lake in November and we should expect the results any time now. The last three years have all been generally non-detect for the TCE contaminants of PGA. The lake was also sampled in December. I directed sampling company that also took the PGA North samples on behalf of the Luke contamination. So we did get a sample tested for PFAS and PFOS. I did want to show council a couple of graphics just to give perspective of what's happening with the plume. This image here is the second quarter of two thousand twenty-two and the second image. And this is what a graphic I just recently received at the end of last year. As you can see, the, the big red outline was the previous image. So in a little more than a year, it has recessed further south with the efforts of the PGA teams. Combination of modifying the extraction and injection wells throughout the system on the north end, they've started forcing the, the plume further south. Projections on this plume out in the next five, ten, fifteen years. This thing becomes a skinny little sliver along Litchfield Road. So it's, their plan of attack is working tremendously. On the Luke side, we are working with legal on modifying the IGA with the Department of Defense. The last round that we got from the department, they struck a lot of the permitting. They didn't want to do permits through the city. They wanted to be able to work through the Circle Act, which gives them the authority to designate areas of remediation, drill wells as they see fit and generally told us afterwards, we are pushing back on that. We'd like them to come to the city beforehand, let us know where they're going to drill, where they need to occupy right away or city property. So that is a point of contention between the two parties. I did want to bring something to council's attention based on the PFAS and PFO results that we did get from the testing company, which we're going to have an environmental consultant look at. The numbers are a bit high. So the list that I was given is the PFOS is four point six parts per million and the PFOA is two point five parts per million. The health requirement cutoffs are in the decimal places. So we are, the results we're getting from the lake sampling are tens of times above the health limit.
This is from our lake?
This is from our lake well. So we're going to have an environmental consultant review the results that just came in and will provide an update to council after that point. For that, that's all I have for the contamination and entertain any questions?
Questions?
That again, not, I apologize, I'm not an environmental consultant, but what I can tell you is that they are affected. The health, the numbers for the parts per million are, are much higher than what's recommended by the Health Department and the various other federal agencies as a healthy cutoff for exposure. So I would imagine that the fish are affected in the same way.
Counselor O'Mac.
Keith, do they have any outline for the, for the Luke? I'm going to call it super fund, but like we have here or do they have any idea where the contamination?
As a matter of fact, from my understanding, they do not. And the effort that they're doing now is that effort. So they're, they're, I don't want to say they're shooting in the dark, but what they're trying to do is establish a boundary by drilling monitoring wells throughout the city of Goodyear, city of Litchfield, Maricopa County. So when they, that's kind of the early stages. If you look back at the history of PGA, they were getting readings from the city of Goodyear and city of Avondale drinking water wells. And that's how they helped. We don't have as many wells that are working in the same area. We do on the riverside, but outside of the city of Litchfield Park, many of those are showing higher numbers of, of that contaminant. So they've got a, have an easterly and a northerly maybe boundary, but they don't have anything in the south area where we are. That's what they want to do.
Do you, did the, were they involved in the testing on our lake? So they have the results of the lake?
They were not. I just got the test results. We did that direction of myself and Matthew, so we will share that.
Yeah, we definitely want to share that with the, the task force that's working on it. And then I would like to, I would like to have you slash staff, I think I've talked to the city manager at least briefly about this. I would like to know exactly how the water from Liberty gets from Liberty to us, meaning where are the wells that are used, serviced, Litchfield Park, where are they? So we understand how they're situated in relationship to this PFOS problem. And then normally what they do is pipe that water from the well into a reservoir or a tank, big tank. And, and they, and then they distribute the water to us from one or more of those tanks. So I want to know every tank that is servicing us. And then they have, Liberty has told the task force that they're filtering the water so that we don't have a PFOS problem in our drinking water. But they haven't been very clear about which of the, of these tanks are being filtered. So we want to know where are their filters located? With the obvious concern of are we getting supplied by any tanks that are supplying us with unfiltered water?
Can tell you that not all their wells are filtered that are in the zone. So that's the difference between which system it supplies the potable water to. But we can isolate the location.
Yeah, we need to isolate that and understand it and then we may or may not want to make, you know, complaints about that.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Another thing, Keith, it would be interesting to know is groundwater out of these wells, there's, there's two aquifers, an upper and a lower aquifer. And the upper aquifer is frequently contaminated and the lower is frequently relatively good. There are some conduit wells that never were capped that go between the upper and lower aquifers that do, will transmit contamination from one to the other. But it would be nice to know, I guess, whether these wells are in, you know, the, if the contamination is only in the upper aquifer and if these wells are drawing from the bottom aquifer and trying to stay away from the contamination.
Mr. Vice Mayor, yes, we'll, I'll look into that. I do know that the PGA North and South has made that determination. That's why there's a subunit A, a subunit B, which is the different strata. I don't think Luke has gotten that far yet, but, and they haven't established how many subunits are. That's the last I've heard. There could be multiple, there could be two, there could be one. And the depths of the wells, I have checked the well registry. I do know that the wells throughout the area of Litchfield Park are, they heavily vary in depth. So to me, that says that there's multiple walk for levels, as you mentioned. But we can hone in on that with, with Liberty and Luke Air Force Base.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next item is the capital improvement projects update.
Mayor, council, start off with the Southwest Valley Truck Study. I heard from MAG today that the draft report is going to be distributed by either Friday or Monday this, of this week. Something interesting that I learned from MAG is that they are not distributing the draft report to any other project partners. It was meant as more of a document that was going to have internal and executive, internal staff and executive review at MAG and not distributed between all of the cities. But they are going to provide us a copy of the draft so that we can review the detailed information that went into the analysis. So that's a unique thing that MAG has given us, the city, because of our persistence. So we will review that draft and provide comments and share it with council. A quick update on some CIP. We had a engineering and, and planning met with RPG on January eleventh and provided revised graphic for the Camelback Park. As you can see here, this is a graphic that consultants on the on-call are working on. So revision to what was proposed, as you can see, there's, the previous is in dark where the parking lot was on the park. What we've done is we revised where you can see, it's hard to see on the, on the screen, but the red is attached. So the yellow is on-street parking. In order to make that viable, we do have to mitigate speeding. So we're proposing traffic speed cushions. We're currently working on the design for those and have the on-call looking at a speed study model. They've already done a speed study on V and W, but now they're going to look at it for the purposes of warranting speed cushions because without the cushions, we can't have on-street parking. So this is a quick rundown of that. As I mentioned before, the on-call consultants are looking, are revising the conceptual designs for this layout. The other thing of note is previously, I believe the, the project costs were in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the grass block and the concrete and the asphalt that was proposed with that larger parking lot on the, on the site. With this change for on-street parking, anticipate the cost will come down. Some of the requests from RPG were things like utilizing the new area we're getting from the, the park, which is about an acre of additional area, possibly a walking track, possibly permanent exercise or gaming equipment. If we have additional funds, we're going to look into that as options to add to the park. The next project talked about is the perimeter wall. So revise, revise the exhibit to show locations where the wall is going to be solid versus proposed view fence sections on the straightaway of the fairway of the greens. Previously, we had view fence sections along the chamfer in the corner there, Dyser and Camelback Road. But from the public feedback, the public meeting feedback we received, we did take those other sections out. But the court, the other, the few I got from RPG and some of the folks that attended the public meeting was they want to have, they would like to see maybe a section have the view fence and that's where we have that. You can see a delineated red. So if you're driving westbound on Camelback, past Dyser, you can look off to your left and see the green space in the fairway. This project is also pushing forward with the on-call consultant for preliminary design plans. Okay, next up, Public Works Facility, we have the architect has gone through four different iterations. Public Works and myself have met with him several times. We are honing in on a preferred conceptual layout for the site and the, the building itself. The next step is now that we have the preferred layout and the configurations, we want to look at what the rough order magnitude costs are for various types of buildings that would work with that configuration. Those will be compiled and we'll present those to council. You might have noticed the flashing stop sign and yield signs are all up. Staff did a great job putting those up in all the various locations throughout the city. Well, mostly at the roundabout right here, the traffic circle and at the roundabout. The next step in this is to add the, the radar system so that they're not flashing twenty-four hours a day. They'll flash when a car approaches within a few hundred feet of the radar. So right now they flash all day. We're hoping that they're not too bothersome, but they are effective. We have been hearing good feedback about them. Also radar, the solar speed signs have been placed on, on Camelback and Litchfield. I'm hoping everybody's had a chance to see those. They've, I've driven, I drive both of those roads every day and people are pumping the brakes and slowing down. So I think they're, they're doing their job. There was a total of four. We had two that were on the state contract and staff, Public Works bought the remaining two and installed them in the last few weeks. Public Works also finished fifty-one signs throughout the city, various speed limit yields, pedestrian, other pedestrian related signage. So those are all up and again, looking good. Dyser and Indian School Road reconstruction revisions of the final design are commencing in the next couple of weeks. We had a contractor look at the overall cost and get a rough order of cost of what we're looking at, which is coming in under budget, under what we have in the, in the CIP budget. So that's, those numbers are looking good for us. And that is all I have for my CIP update. If there are any questions?
Counselor James.
Thank you. So just on the Camelback Park, just for the clear, right now, based off of public feedback from the public hearing, other than a potential view fence, looking down towards the golf course on that slap pass where Chief Wayne's house is, essentially the pony wall Camelback is now going to be an eight-foot wall with no view fence, wrapping all the way around from Camelback to Dyser. That's, that's kind of what's the marching orders are right now.
Yes, Councilman James, can you bring the graphic back up? Solid. So what, what you see in everywhere other than Turtle Park, the remaining parts of the city specifically on Litchfield and the other remaining parts of Indian School, what you see in that, it's harder, again, hard to see, but the cyan turquoise color is solid wall with a small section. One other thing that we're considering is small sections of view fence that might be more like a two-foot opening with some wrought iron in other various locations, but the overwhelming majority of the feedback that we got from the public was for various reasons, there was all kinds of reasons, but the main, the majority of the feedback was, let's put a solid wall.
Counselor O'Mac.
Thank you, sir.
It's probably been eighteen months ago, we talked about a drawing for Scout Lodge. I know that's put on a back burner. Is that anywhere as far as moving the Scout Lodge that you and I had talked about or where we're at with that?
Thank you, Councilman O'Mac. I can tell you it hasn't had a lot of steam forward, but we have gotten the quotes from the moving company. The next steps that staff needs to do is specifically myself is reach out to other contractors that would do that. It's called TI work once before and after. So we're going to have to redo walls, we're going to have to redo plumbing, we have to redo foundations. So that we got an initial cost for just the move and then we have to generate a, a kind of a overall cost for all those ancillary TI improvements in the foundations and all that. So that is what hasn't happened yet, but is definitely on the docket.
Someone on the board, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
James, oh, yeah, one second, Vice Mayor. Counselor James.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One last question on the Camelback Park. Are any of the existing pine tree or eucalyptus trees going to be affected by the push out of the wall? Are any trees going to have to be removed?
Thank you, Councilmember James. That's actually what the consultant's looking at right now. I actually talked to him this week about that. It was to generate a graphic of what's going to affect, what, what affected trees. The overall goal is to protect as many as we possibly can. We have historically in other areas along the perimeter wall modified foundations and chamfers of some of the walls to protect some of the more mature trees, especially if we run into things with utilities. Actually, I could tell you a long Dyser, we're going to have a heck of a time navigating some of those utilities. So we're looking at different wall configurations to try to do that. And it'll go the same with the, with the plant material that we want to save. And, and not to mention the, the airline canal is, runs about eight feet south of the pony wall and it's shallow, so we're going to have to play with that guy too. So we're looking at options to protect as much as we can in place.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
No, thank you, Mayor. Looking at the drawing on the parking for Camelback Park, it looks like the way it's set up, the back of the cars will be sitting against the driving lane. And I thought the direction was that there would be some space between the back of the cars and that driving lanes. The cars could back out some ways and have a clearer view before they went further. So some kind of wide it off island or something, you know, back behind those cars. And I don't see that in the drawing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That exhibit was a graphic, the consultant, the on-call consultant's doing an actual scale drawing. That is their marching order. So there, where the curb is now, there would essentially be either a small island, like you mentioned, or a wide valley gutter because we have to continue the drainage in the same pattern. So the, when that is designed, we'll have all parking on the other side of that. So there will be a buffer so that of course have to back out. We already have a wide enough road to delineate what you might think as a bike lane today. So we have that buffer plus the amount that we're pushing the cars into the park. So that is the goal is to make sure it's a safe operation in conjunction with the speed cushions to slow the oncoming traffic down.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you for your reports.
Thank you.
Special project, special project report update. Broke.
Thank you, Mayor, council, good evening.
Few updates, as Keith indicated, he and I were at the Recreation and Public Grounds Commission meeting last week. As Keith indicated, he and I were at the Recreation and Public Grounds Commission meeting last week to discuss the park, as well as I provided an update on Litchfield Square. It was great to be in front of RPG. It's one of the few boards and commissions I had not presented in front of, gave them an update on where we're at with Litchfield Square, our construction timeframe, and I promised to come back to RPG on some later phases for the project, for the specifically for Litchfield Square Park. So we will come back to RPG at a later date for some future components for the park itself. Matthew mentioned Village Parkway in front of the south side of the church at Litchfield Park is coming along. About a week and a half ago, the palm trees were installed in that section of Village Parkway has a raised landscape median in the middle of the roadway. The palm trees were planted, I believe, two weeks ago this coming Friday. Adds a really dramatic effect. Went out and looked at the site this afternoon, and the street's looking really good. It's not open to public yet since it's still under construction. There will be a north-south crosswalk right at Old Litchfield Road. It'll be, they're laying the pavers this week, so the crosswalk will be pavers, which will also add a nice touch and direct pedestrians where they should be crossing Village Parkway. I mentioned Litchfield Square Park. Weather permitting, the sod should be laid later this month, first part of February. If you go out there, you can see the the park is fenced with a temporary construction fence. Most of the subgrade, subwork has been completed. And the subcontractor, landscape subcontractor will be laying the sod here hopefully in the next two, two and a half weeks. Honeysuckle Street west of Old Litchfield Road is pretty much done. Landscaping was recently installed, I believe, around Christmas time, New Year's. Concrete work and paving for the section of Honeysuckle just north of City Hall is underway. If you go back in there and and take a look around and start to see the formation of the the street itself north of City Hall. Back to Old Litchfield Road. Some of you may have noticed the the mailbox, United States Postal Service mailbox was temporarily removed about a week ago. It's in the landscape, was in the landscape median right around Village Parkway. That needed to be removed temporarily to let Aiken Gardner make some improvements to the median. It will be reinstalled, meet ADA standards per the Postal Service. So if any in your travels, if anybody's asking you about the mailbox, I think that came up at RPG last week, it will be reinstalled once the meeting is reconfigured. I think last time at the November update, we're working on the three-way stops, stop sign at Honeysuckle and Old Litchfield Road. That design has been approved. Keith has reviewed it. Public Works has reviewed it. So we're, we've got Aiken Gardner lined up to reconfigure some ADA accessible ramps on the east side of Old Litchfield Road adjacent to the Wigwam. And then we'll have a three-way stop sign hopefully in the next few weeks at that intersection. And then finally, a brand new street west of City Hall, La Loma Avenue will be is the construction work has started there. The road bed for La Loma, it's a north-south street north of Wigwam. It'll continue north into the square. Aiken Gardner has started the work, earthwork on that. You can, if you go out there, you can see the the alignment of the roadway. The final design for La Loma will include public parking on both the east and west sides of La Loma just north of Wigwam. So we'll have more public parking available in that part of the square. So making good progress. We're working in concert with Aiken Gardner to hopefully wrap up the infrastructure by Labor Day of this year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Councilman, up tonight.
Questions from the council?
Will the three-way stop be blinking lights? I like them.
Looking over.
They're festive, but no. My only thought about that is if we're putting them in, especially if it's new, that would be awesome. It'll be seen because we're going to have people blow through there for a while, probably, you know. Anyway, I just think those blinking lights are fabulous. Anyway, my opinion.
It wouldn't make sense to make them blinking since everything else around them is blinking.
I agree.
So put an order in for some blinking ones. The crosswalks will be high visibility, so very white, reflected paint. So I will have to change signage that will likely be blinking ahead of the stop signs. So at least have that in the plan. Yeah, get some, set that many more stop signs and skip them and put them in.
Dang, I've never had that fast.
I understand what happens when you make a suggestion. I listen, we listen. Just a couple of questions. When we were going through and talking about going to be as efficient as possible and reduce cost, one of the items we talked about was the sprinkler system in the park. What 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 do we finally end up with at the end of the day in terms of what we're doing?
Mayor, council, so the sprinkler system, like I said, most of the sub subterranean work is completed. So it will be installed, obviously, before the sod is laid. The sub consultant, the designer is Heinz Irrigation Consultants. They're a very good design firm. And I think we've worked through the valve system with Kyle's people, with Melbourne, who's been in the back, has been very helpful, and Keith along the way to try to have an efficient irrigation system with the the sprinkler heads and and get the right valves and and timers and everything in place for the the future park.
Yeah, one of the other things we talked about was trying to get the project wrapped up a month earlier than what was originally projected to say to save the administrative costs of another month of them working. Was that successful or not successful?
Mayor, it was successful. We, our goal is to finish in September and not linger into the upcoming holiday season in the fall. It will be tight, but the Aiken Gardner folks, they know that's our desire is to finish up and have them vacate the the job site by roughly by Labor Day, give or take two to three weeks.
It would be a good idea for you to put together a timeline and make sure they meet it.
Yes, I can do that.
And any other questions from council?
I just wanted to make a kind of funny comment about the blinking lights on the signs. Was down enjoying dinner at one of the restaurants downtown and ran into a three-year-old little boy who was talking about trucks and how many trucks he was seeing. My grandson's all into trucks. And I said, what do you think of the signs? And he goes, oh, they're cool. And I said, why do you think they light them up? So people will stop. And he looked at me like I was absolutely stupid for not knowing that. So they're doing their job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman James.
Just one question. So with with Labor Day being the target date, will that be the day that all the fences are dropped? And the new Village Parkway, the new La Loma, all of the downtown area will be drivable for the public? Is that how that works?
Mayor, Councilmember James, yes, that's the plan. There could be some, I'll need to work with Matthew and and with Keith and and Kyle on phasing. We were, I think I've talked before, where we we don't want to mix construction traffic with public traffic. And so that's, safety is obviously a very important component of the project. But yes, that's the plan is that the construction fences would start to be removed or reduced. A couple of months ago, we were talking with Aiken Gardner about that. They understand that. And yeah, there is a plan to, if you look at Village Parkway, for instance, from Litchfield Road east, the east leg of the the roundabout, the road basically is done. It just hasn't, has not been accepted by the city and opened up to the public yet for for traffic.
Does a follow-on to that. So this hypothetical, this inevitable three-way stop that will occur, we're really just worried about north and south will have the stop signs for the time being because the the western lane into the city will not yield. So we're just going to have another stop sign on Old Litchfield Road in the interim.
That is correct.
So the citizens will have an opportunity to see there's a stop sign there over the next few months where we actually have the full three-way stop there.
That is correct. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is in your packet, and that's magistrate court monthly report. If you have any questions from that, please get ahold of the city manager. Next item is a consent agenda, item nine A through G. Is there any item that any council member wishes to take off of consent?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion on the consent agenda, sir?
Are you, yes?
Thank you, sir. I was just going to ask you, since Judge Baxter is actually here with us tonight, maybe we move her item to business this weekend and introduce her to council?
I was going to plan on introducing her to council after we adopted the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
So is there any item that any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda for discussion?
Vice Mayor, item E.
Item E?
Yes.
Okay, any, anyone else want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt a consent items nine A through G with the exception of E? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, now, Mr. City Manager, would you please introduce our new Associate Assistant Magistrate?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, we, there is Judge Gene Baxter, welcome. You're welcome to come upon me if you'd like to.
Well, I'm noticing that there's an expedited process here to move the meeting along, and I don't want to overstate myself. I'm happy to be here. I'm looking forward to serving the the city of Litchfield Park, and thank you very much.
If you, if you have anything you'd like to say to us, please feel free to do so.
Okay.
It's been about trying to expedite it past good comments. And also, if the council has any questions of the judge, please, please ask her. So we'll let you go first.
Oh, okay. Should I step over there?
Sure.
Well, I'm happy to be here, and I'll just give you the short story. I was, I know there's a a close relationship with Luke Air Force Base. I was, I was an Air Force brat and ended up back in Arizona with our association with Williams Air Force Base on the other side. And went to high school here, law school in Virginia, practiced there, doing a variety of things, and served in the Glendale City Court for roughly 30 years. And so I've known your magistrate Craig Ring for for quite a while. I have a great affinity for Litchfield Park, and my kids for several years went to Trinity Lutheran School, swam at the rec center, so I checked books out of the library. And I'm on the board at Midwestern University, and we've been having our annual board retreats at the Wigwam for the last, I don't know how many years, but as long as I've been on the board, which is more than 15 years. So I'm very happy to be here, and I look forward to serving you. And so thank you very much for the appointment.
Thank you. We appreciate, we appreciate that you're interested in service servicing our community as our magistrate judge. So thank you. Any questions or comments from any council members? Okay. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, you asked for item E to be removed from the consent items. Do you have a question or a particular thing you'd like discussed?
No, Mayor, that was my mistake. I apologize. Packet was put together kind of randomly, but it's actually the next section, the business section with agenda items got all kind of out of order and kind of jumbled up. And I think they've been straightened back out now in this latest version of it. But no, I don't have an issue with that. I'm sorry.
All right, would you like to move adoption of item nine A E then? I was thinking the vice mayor wouldn't want to do it.
He's frozen.
He is frozen, all right. But move the second into adopt item nine E. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, nine E is passed. So now we'll go to our business section 10A is our first item, adoption of resolution 24-560 floor on call of elections.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. The information on this call of election is in your packet, and I have nothing further to add. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions concerning the call of the election? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is 10B, adoption of the 24, 2024 City Council regular meeting schedule.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Every year, the council determines what their schedule will be. Currently, the schedule is the first and third Wednesdays. First Wednesdays are reserved for work study sessions. On the third Wednesday is for regular meetings, and those begin at seven o'clock.
A discussion on the meeting schedule for 2024. Now, is there a motion to adopt the meeting schedule as presented? I'll move. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we have a meeting scheduled. Next item is an amended use agreement for the shared dental office parking lot. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you may remember you approved a dental parking agreement previously back in November. At that time, we were still negotiating with them, so there were a few issues to still work out. And this is just finalizing those issues. Of course, this agreement is for the parking lot behind you where you parked tonight for tonight's council meeting, as that parking lot is actually owned, part of the parcel that goes with the dentist office. As part of this process, we did research it and do a title search and did find there was, there was no previous parking agreements in hand other than the one that was with the city. I highly suspect that there was a handshake agreement back in the 60s. Those dental offices were built in 66. The library was being built around that same time. I think there was probably, again, a handshake agreement in place, but there was no record of it, so it doesn't matter. Anyway, that being said, but again, these are just some small amendments to this agreement. And those are listed number one through seven. You do have the red line version in your packet that shows the differences between the November version and this version. And they're, they're small changes. I welcome any questions if there are any on this document. One change you did make from the previous agreement was before there was a complicated formula on property taxes. On the new agreement, it's just a standard 28% that we pay 28% of that every year. Also that we pay 50% of parking lot maintenance. You will see that soon in 2024. They've already received a quote to do that job. We quoted it ourselves and came right into the same ballpark, so that quote is a is a good one. Do that work. So that will, of course, be will be to reseal the asphalt, restart the parking lot, et cetera. And also, we will be doing the landscaping and tree maintenance, various things. Welcome any questions if there aren't yet this time. And I would like to thank Dr. Ellsworth and his partner, Dr. Warren, for working with us on this agreement.
Any questions from council?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
No, thank you. I did, I previously declared a conflict on this issue, which still remains. I won't take part in this discussion.
All righty. Any, any further comment or discussion? If not, is there a motion to adopt the amendments to the shared use agreement for the dental office parking lot? For a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The next item is the adoption of resolution 23-559, amending the personnel policy concerning personal leave. Lisa, Lisa Adams is going to make the presentation. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. There was a PowerPoint presentation in your packet. There was a PowerPoint presentation in your packets. I don't know where I would pull that up.
Page one, all right.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
So when I close your agenda, we can move past that. Um, we'll just go to the next slide for a reason for request. It'll please the council if I may summarize, because the information was already in your packet and of course answering any questions, we'll move forward.
That'll be fine.
Thank you. Reason for the requests, staff requests. So follow up based on the survey results, um, in addition to staff requests for the winter closure. The survey results resulted, excuse me, in eighty-six percent in favor of a winter closure. We also conducted a two thousand two twenty-two look back and a two thousand twenty-three review of time off requests. In twenty-two, it reflects thirty-seven percent, and in twenty-three, fifty-nine percent. Workflow data was also included in this request for a reason for request. Workflow data indicates a slow or low activity. Uh, front office activity is indicated, as well as public works, with no overtime indicating the on-call staff is not utilized, building permits, building inspections, and code enforcement. Any questions on this reason for request? We can go to the next slide, recommended changes. It'll please the council, I'd like to summarize on this as well. Recommended changes, replacing policy thirty-twenty, which is personal leave, with the winter closure. If approved, this would impact policy H R twenty-four three, which is the overtime compensation policy. The impact would be implementing the word winter closure. It would need to be added to the overtime compensation policy. The red area indicates the actual policy changes. No questions? You may move forward to the next slide, benefits of change. We'll summarize here as well. Quality of time for the employees. And keeping Litchfield Park competitive with the other larger cities. We could move forward, supporting reasons for winter closure. We'll summarize here as well. Supporting reasons for personal leave days. So personal leave days expire every December thirty-first. So employees, um, tend to use these days during that period. Other cities are also closed during this period and those cities are listed. We can move forward to the next slide. This is the summary of the type of leaves that we currently have. We have vacation, sick and personal leave. Again, personally referring back to that expiration date of December thirty-first. Next slide, please, for sick or cools. This is just some back history as far as how the sick policy is implemented and the hours that are allowed for the sick or cool. Average employee receives three point oh eight per pay period, with employees that, um, average less than nineteen hours getting point zero three three per pay period. Next slide, please, vacation of cool. Vacation hours accrued per pay period, and the cool is based on years of service, which is outlining their cool chart that's listed here. Next slide, please, for personal leave. This is the current policy. And it outlines the two to three days afforded to an employee on a use it or lose it basis setup, again, must be used by December thirty-first. Next slide. This is the cost of paid winter closure. I don't wanna dive into this slide as much because it's detailed and more visual in the second slide where it's got cost of paid winter closure continued. So if you could scroll up. And this is a better outline. It also provides a, um, outline of how the shift would work if approved, as far as the skeleton crew, for those who would be providing services during the closure time. The cost is seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents per day. A skeleton, skeleton crew schedule is structured for a half-day divided between four workers. And that's to ensure, um, a full day of coverage. If we could scroll past that to the policy effective date. If approved, the policy would take effect in this month of twenty-two four and the personal leave hours would be eliminated and winter closure would replace that. Questions?
I, I personally have a cost, I have a question on this cost. I, I think your cost overstates what the actual cost of the city will be.
You're correct.
So if, during the, during the period between Christmas and New Year's, how many requests for service do we get coming into the office? Could you track that this year?
Um, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding we actually had, uh, five people come in that week. And if I'm understanding your request, we, we had no public works overtime that week.
Um, what I'm wondering is whether the staff in the offices really did any work for our residents during the, my guess is they did not.
It's, it's a pretty dead week, to be honest, sir.
And we still paid them.
That's correct, sir. At, to your point, Mr. Mayor, um, we're, we're paying the employees the either way, so really it's a loss of productivity versus paying more. If you're paying more, it would be on public works overtime. Other than that, it's really just a loss of productivity, in my opinion, sir.
But I wonder if you, if actually you don't, because you have to offset, you're gonna save paying people for these personal days. Right? So you're not, you know, you're really, I, I don't think in, at the end of the day, this is gonna cost the city any, any cash. And I think staff will still get the same amount of work done at the end of the year. You know, over the course of a year, they'll have exactly the same things will be accomplished. So it's, I don't think this really costs us anything.
I would agree, sir.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
In conjunction with what you're just saying, so what happens if somebody during July needs personal leave time off for whatever reason that's permitted in the current system? They don't get it under the new system. So what happens to their pay? Redocking them then for taking time off?
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I could answer that, sir. They would still have the vacation time and the sick time they have now. That wouldn't change. So of course they could use vacation time for that. Depending what the need was, they might could use sick time for it. The change there would be they would no longer have personal time off, but they would have this winter closure instead. They could still use vacation time or sick time, again, depending on what the need was, sir. It's just a different type of leave, if that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments?
Vice Mayor, thank you.
My, my only concern, even though we have limited need and, and not a lot of people are coming in, is that we have the ability of an on-call, somebody, so that we're completely not shut down as a city. Not just the techs that are in the street, not the minimum, but somebody available if somebody needs something that, that comes up as an emergency.
Thank you, Councilman Claire. Up to that question, so Public Works has someone on call all the time. If there's no one actually in office, Public Works is on call. There's always someone on call twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. But that being said, to Councilman Claire's question, your average citizen wouldn't know that, and they certainly wouldn't have the on-call number. If that's an issue, we could, we, we could find a way to do that, to have someone there if somebody came in. I'd wanna make sure they were safe, obviously, but I think there would, there would be a way of doing that. I, I don't imagine that anybody would come in, to be honest, but we could certainly address that, and I appreciate the concerns, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor, if you don't mind me asking, did I satisfy your concern, sir? I'm, I'm waiting to see your eyebrows go back down and I have it.
Well, thank you, Matthew. You know, I had heard earlier that our biggest event of the year, and it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger as a patriot, which is exactly during this time you're gonna shut city hall down. Uh, do we have staff that are working during that time that are being involved at, at all? Is, does it make sense not to have a skeleton crew associated with city hall? If we had fifty-nine percent take off anyway, that meant we had forty-one percent of the staff employees that were available during that time for whatever emergency might pop up. Uh, if we shut city hall down, where, what's the ramp up time and where are these, how are these employees being selected and where are they coming from to take care of whatever the problem is?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So the forty-one percent that actually worked those, that time, is it, of course, just Public Works? That's ran, that's random city employees that actually worked that week. So some of that, of course, would be Public Works. Um, to be honest, the city person that did the most with the tournament is, is actually Sonny. And he, and he does most of that on a volunteer basis, just to be honest. Um, as far as Public Works goes, we would certainly have Public Works available. They would be on call and as, as it showed, they would split up that. So we could certainly have there to help out with that event as needed, but Sonny does a lot of that coordination, sir.
You know, like, I'm still struggling with just shutting the city hall down during that period of time and, and not having at least a skeleton crew cleaning the parks, taking care of the parks, taking care of the restrooms. That's, that's gotta be one of the heavier times of uses for the parks when school's out and the Christmas and company comes in and stuff.
You, you, you would still have the skeletal crew on Public Works, sir. That's the ones you would have still working. You would still have skeletal crews on that. And Public Works have laid out logistics on that as far as which employees would work and which ones wouldn't. But yes, or Public Works would be the employees that would still be working. It would be a much smaller crew than normal for obvious reasons. But there would be a skeletal crew still working, 'cause you're right. Public Works duties don't just stop. Park restrooms still have to be cleaned, things that still have to be addressed. That wouldn't change. But it would be a smaller crew than it is now, and they would be paid overtime for those hours because the other employees would be out. And that's where that cost comes from that Lisa presented, sir.
Yes, Councilman Claire.
So Matthew, so what in reality what we're doing is we're trading three days of use throughout the year at their time of need to answer Vice Mayor's question. So employees now have three days they can use anytime and forcing them to take those days off during the, the, the Christmas break.
That's correct, sir. And eighty-six percent of the employees supported doing that.
Welcome, Brendan Watson.
Was there any rationale given by the other fourteen percent as to why they didn't support the idea?
Lisa.
Now that it's time, we did not receive that.
So if the eighty, I'm sorry, if the eighty-six percent all asked for the time off at Christmas and the fourteen didn't, we don't have the skeleton crew. Or we have a, a crew of people that wanna work during the timeframe and the other people have the time off. They're requesting for the time off. They're getting it, right?
Some, they, some, some years, that's plenty of time because of the way the, the holidays fall.
Sure.
And other years, it's, it's not. And that's where you have that, this conflict. I wonder i- if this is something that we could institute as a trial project for this year and see how it works.
We certainly could, and.
Any of this, sure, question whether there's some dire consequences to doing it?
I would point out, the next agenda goes with this too, 'cause there's a change of two H R policies to do this. And also that currently the cities of El Mirage, Tolleson was the third one.
Youngtown.
Youngtown.
Youngtown, thank you. El Mirage, Youngtown, Tolleson are currently doing this month.
I mean, I think the eighty-six percent speaks, but under, I, I just hate having nobody available and the city shutting itself down.
Yes, sir. I think, if that's the concern, I think we could, I think we could have someone available in city hall. It's just a matter, again, of making sure they're safe. If there's just one person there, it'd be my only concern.
I, I, I can tell you, I was in city hall during that period. There's not, not a lot going on.
No.
So is there, is there a motion to, uh, to adopt this policy on a, on a trial basis for one year to see how it works at next Christmas time?
Certainly.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Next item. Okay, next item is res, adoption of resolution twenty-three dash five-five, oh, we already, adoption of resolution twenty-three dash five sixty, winter closure policy.
Mr. Mayor, we don't need that one anymore because you tried.
Okay, so we did that, we did that when we did D E R.
Those two are related, sir, so we don't need D E R E.
We're gonna do both of those on a trial basis. All right, introduction of ordinance twenty-four dash two seventy-nine related to zoning code.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Periodically, we bring forward different amendments to either the city code or the zoning code, and it's, um, tonight we're asking that you, uh, take an introduction on an ordinance relative to certain amendments to the zoning code. And these are items that our customer base, we either internal customers or external customers have identified as, um, topics that we should take a look at in the zoning code. So tonight, um, would be an introduction of the ordinance, would not be an adoption. What, basically what we're doing, this is a cleanup or a housekeeping measure. So, uh, to be brief, we're suggesting a revision to the definition of our certificate of occupancy or C of O. That came from our building official. So the, the changes or proposed changes are either the deletions are in strike-through text and then any additions are in all caps. So under the definition for C of O, um, we're just making some, um, some cleanup, uh, items. We noticed on, under community facility, we identify that as a permitted land use in the zoning code, but we don't define what a community facility is. So we're suggesting a new definition for a community facility. Same thing with convalescent home. It's a permitted land use in the zoning code, but it's not defined in the zoning code. And then the next one, uh, came from our code compliance, uh, officer. Um, we do not have a definition for inoperable vehicle, so she asked if we could include that as a definition in the zoning code. Landscaping, there's a slight revision. Uh, all these went through P and Z, uh, last month, by the way. Um, landscaping, just a couple of, um, minor either deletions or additions, adding decomposed granite and artificial grass slash turf. A new definition, again, coming from our building official is what's called a T C O or Temporary Certificate of Occupancy. Uh, again, from our building official, this came out of a recent, uh, commercial enterprise that opened, the Carl's Jr. up on Camelback and Dice Art Southeast, east of the southeast corner. Had a temporary certi, certificate of occupants to be, occupancy before they, uh, got their C of O. So we're suggesting that we just define what a T C O is. And then finally, uh, right-of-way, this came out of our, uh, city engineer. We don't define what right-of-way is in our zoning code, so we're suggesting a new definition there. Finally, a couple of, uh, changes to our required parking spaces and parking areas. In section twenty-nine point oh five, um, we're suggesting the, the word located be added to, uh, item A under residential uses. So it read parking spaces for residential use shall be located. That would be the new word, onsite. And then parking restrictions for residential uses, a new subsection H would be parking is not permitted in the rear yard in areas that are adjacent to required side yard view fences. This came out of clarification from our code, uh, compliance officer. We'd like to have something on the books that talks about, uh, where parking could be provided in residential districts where adjacent to view fencing. As I, uh, indicated, uh, P and Z reviewed this. It worked on it for quite a few months. We started in May with some initial, uh, discussion with P and Z. They asked us to keep working on it. We came back, work-study session in September and then had hearings in November, and they did, uh, have a hearing in December where they recommended approval to advances to council. So the recommendation tonight is to, uh, introduce the ordinance, to, in front of council, and then I would come back next month for adoption if, if that's what the council put. uh, to, in front of council and then I would come back next month for adoption if, if that's what the council ple, uh, pleasure is tonight.
Any questions from council?
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is for the city attorney. The, looking at some of these changes is in here, it looks like you might be taking away people's rights to use their property in certain circumstances under the zoning code. Is that gonna subject us to a takings kind of lawsuit?
Vice Mayor, I assume you're referring to the restrictive provision for rear yard parking, uh, adjacent to view fencing?
I don't wanna break it out exactly specifically, but I'm referring to that list and some things that I see in here. I'm just wondering if you've looked it over and we're, we're gonna, is the section, was it two seventy-nine? What was that, that, that claim that, um, the ordinance or the law that was passed subjects to damages?
Yeah, no, we've, we've reviewed the, uh, the proposed changes and the, you know, they, they comply with what the, the city's authority is and the, the minimal restrictions. Um, I, I don't anticipate, but of course I can't control what, what anybody may or may not do, but I think we are on very solid, uh, footing for not having that type of claim.
So what you're saying is if we devalue anybody's property, it's gonna be de minimis or we're not gonna have much of a case?
Well, exactly. You're talking the, you're, you're not talking the, the use of their property substantially. You're just talking the placement of a vehicle, just like we have regulations that you can't place vehicles on decomposed granite or on grass, different things like that.
Okay, so I'm gonna take it that you're telling us that this is fine and we're not gonna be subject to any kind of
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
The cha, and the change to twenty-nine point eleven is really consistent with the regulation that we've already just adopted recently about the parking of other kinds of vehicles in backyards that are visible to, you know, to the public. Obviously, in a view fence, it's not gonna be, uh, screened in any way. But it might, that might be the one, the one thing we should look at is make sure that this change to twenty-nine eleven is consistent with what we did on the screening of vehicles and back in people's backyards already.
Correct, yes. This, this restriction is much less restrictive than the, the issues that we had with regard to the, uh, the screening of R Vs and travel trailers and things like that. But we, we will look and compare those just to make sure that there's no conflict.
We should because it, it would be, you know, i- is it permissible in a, in a backyard with a view fence to screen a vehicle with shrubs and whatever? In the same way that we've allowed screening for a recreational vehicle or boat or
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check and take a look at that and, uh, if we need to maybe pro, propose any, any tweaks to that, what, that would exclude any, uh, any vehicles that are blocked by allowed, uh,
Shrubbs or some other part of
Allowed screening.
So is there, is there any, are there any more questions on the, of this cleanup of zoning code items as presented? If not, is there a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-four dash two seventy-nine related to zoning code amendments, definitions, parking and loading? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna take it unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-seven, the Thomas Plan Development Overlay. So I call the public hearing to order. First item is a staff report.
Mayor, Council, good evening. So just to clarify what we're trying to do with the next, uh, three agenda items, this would be a public hearing, um, to take any kind of public testimony regarding the, the latter, um, agenda items. This is a plan development overlay, P D O request for a mixed use project called the Thomas. It's located on the northeast corner of Indian School Road and Old Litchfield Road. Uh, it's currently occupied by a couple of different churches and, uh, in the course of working on the project over the last year, um, the, the current owner who's in the audience today, tonight, um, would like to, uh, put forward plans for redeveloping, um, and repurposing adaptive reuse of, of the church campus. The P D overlay, uh, proposes a number of different land uses. It would include churches since two are on the site already, uh, boutique services. Uh, different types of studios, uh, yoga and I've never heard of bar A studio till this project. Um, and then boutique, med spa and some other land uses. The site plan that's up, uh, on the, on the monitors is, uh, updated. And that would be included as part of the ordinance. Um, so just for context purposes, um, Indian School Road to the south, Old Litchfield Road to the north, Villanueva Drive to the north. Our public works facility is just across the street to the west of Old Litchfield Road. The lake, uh, is, is just north of Villanueva and then residential land uses to the east. Uh, hard to believe, but on January eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, I presented this item. Um, at that time, council, um, directed staff voted, uh, and directed staff to keep going with the project and finalize the P D or, uh, plan development overlay for the project. So here we are just twelve months later, uh, working on that. So again, uh, we reposted the property, put up new notices. Uh, so this item is, is for public hearing, no action on this particular agenda item, but just, uh, take a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on the item.
Okay, so next item is applicant presentation. Do you have a presentation, Mr. Applicant?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm gonna be brief. Uh, just really excited to get to this point with staff. Uh, we've worked diligently over the last, especially the last twelve months, but really it's been twenty-four months. But, uh, we've worked diligently to come to a, an acceptable agreement and complimentary uh, agreement. And we've, we've finally, we, we have done that and I'm excited to get to this point. Um, like I said, we've, we've diligently tried to mitigate the concerns we've heard from the community over the last months. Uh, so again, I think we've, we've, uh, managed to do that as a team in partnership. Um, I'm appreciative of the staff's efforts, um, to get to this point and I look forward to partnering with them to bring a wonderful new asset to the community. Um, as a resident over the last twelve, fourteen months, what's been, uh, probably the, one of the most fulfilling things is just how many people I've met over the last twelve months that ha, do support this project and are excited about it and wanna see some, some life to that, that corner specifically. So I believe the users we have are complementary to the, to the community. We're excited about bringing the Litchfield Park Art Center to the community and working with local, uh, groups here to help support them. And, uh, just really excited. So I'm here to answer any more questions that you guys might have and, uh, appreciate your support.
Questions from council for the applicant? All right, looks like no questions. Thank you. We do have a request to speak. This is the time of the public hearing for public comments. The request to speak is from Carl Hartman. Mr. Hartman, you're welcome to come up. And if there's anyone else who would, from the public would like to speak on this item, please fill out one of these forms and we'll, we will recognize you once we're done with Mr. Hartman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, I've been involved in viewing the development of the, uh, the, this project over the last several years. And as I am a constant walker of my dog around the lake and back in late July, I noticed that there was activity at the Vestago Church. And so I went to the Mayor Copacan's assessor's website to learn that Brian O'Connor had closed on the fourteenth of July on the property. And, uh, I then started to scurry around and find out what the final development agreement was with regard to traffic control. Because at one point, uh, the developer had been working with staff to ensure that, uh, traffic flowed in and out of the property safely and efficiently. And one of the things at that time was a, what was called a right in, right out off Indian School Road. I didn't see that then in the documentation that I could find. So I called up Matt Williams, who was kind enough to accept my request for a meeting and said, where, where'd the right in, right out go? And he, he couldn't explain to my feeble mind thing about right of way and how this was gonna require people to get in, involved and relinquish rights that they had. And I said, wait, if we have a right of way, we should be able to to say that's where y- you gain access to this property. Well, I could say it's, I'm sure it's a result of my feeble inability to, to comprehend that. But the principal thing that he said in opposition was in order to do it, the city would have to condemn property and that's a bad P R move. You don't wanna have people understand that you as a city are condemning property. Well, to be quite honest with you, I don't give a damn what somebody else thinks about it. I'm concerned about the safety of the people that are gonna be entering and leaving that property. And the idea of the right in, right out onto Indian School, I thought was an excellent one. So I would like to ask that that be reincorporated into the final development plan for the same reasons that it was put in previously. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Next item is a consideration of the development agreement for the Thomas prop, prop, uh, project. Mr. Frock, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, um, in conjunction with the P D overlay, which you just had your hearing on, um, when we were, the, the first introduction of the ordinance for the P D was at your last meeting last year in November. And the council direction at that time, um, was to work with the applicant owner on a development agreement and then come back this year with, in tandem, the, uh, second reading of the plan development or, overlay ordinance, which is the next agenda item, as well as the development agreement. So they, they work hand in hand. So the one thing I did not mention on the P D overlay is the, the property zone P F for public facilities. So that zoning would stay intact. The P D overlay actually provides a greater level of land use control, if you will, um, for the city and for the neighborhood. In conjunction with that, um, in the last two months, uh, since, uh, the holidays occurred, we've prepared a development agreement and, uh, the city clerk has, um, distributed, um, Brian came in, signed the development agreement on Friday. It was agreed to all the terms and conditions of the D A. It was signed and then, um, again, the clerk, um, has distributed it prior to, um, prior to the hearing tonight. What the development agreement will do is it will outline certain site development standards. Again, working in concert with the P D overlay, outline in detail required on and off-site street improvements, and I'll get to that in a moment. And then other terms related to the future redevelopment of the property. Um, lawyer speak or gobbledygook is not probably the, the right term to use, but um, that's all been worked out with our, our legal counsel. So, um, the staff recommendation is for approval of the development agreement for the Thomas. Um, there's a, the document itself, um, includes the legal description, the updated site plan that talks about the access to the site. Uh, there are some conditions, um, related to, um, the offsite improvements for Old Litchfield Road, Indian School Road, buffering, uh, landscape buffers, moving trash enclosures away from the neighbors. Uh, reworking the, uh, driveways on Villanueva so they're, uh, more friendly to the neighborhood, if you will, in terms of access ingress and egress to the site. And then, um, wanting to provide the buffer, there's a handful of homes that are uh, built east of the, the site along the east property line. There will, uh, will work with the owner on uh, a decorative masonry wall to provide a, uh, appropriate buffer, uh, to provide the protection to the neighborhood. So I think Matthew last year talked about, uh, if you walk the site, it's a fairly low wall for a good portion of the east property line. We'll work with the, the applicant on all the site details on raising the wall. And, uh, that would come later as, as part of the permitting process. So we are recommending approval of the development agreement. Um, you may choose either to, others, basically two options for councils to deny the development agreement. And if, if you do that, then we would, staff would recommend that the ordinance not be adopted. The other option is to approve the development agreement as we recommend. We've worked out all the details uh, with the property owner. And then the last agenda item would be to adopt uh, the P D overlay, which we're also, um, recommending that council do. So we feel between the combination of the development agreement and the P D O that, uh, this is a, uh, appropriate redevelopment project and, um, is something that we can work, uh, closely on in the future with, uh, with the property owner. Uh, one thing I did not mention is, uh, connectivity, pedestrian connectivity. Um, would be provided with the, the updated site plan actually shows, uh, new sidewalks that would be built on Villanueva and Old Litchfield Road. Those sidewalks don't exist today. Um, it basically provide the connection. Uh, we're a very pedestrian oriented, uh, community. And, um, by approving the development agreement, the P D overlay, um, some of the infrastructure improvements would be, uh, eight foot wide, um, sidewalks on both Old Litchfield Road as well as Villanueva Drive. We, and again, we would work out alignments and locations uh, of those sidewalks with the, the property and would probably walk the site, um, if, if all these items get approved. If you go out today, uh, there's some impediments, uh, existing mature landscaping that we'd wanna work around. Uh, that would probably necessitate a site visit and, and working out those details in the future. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the development agreement.
Questions from council?
Vice Mayor.
Wow.
We'll be quiet.
We finally, finally got to
Vice Mayor first, in a few seconds.
Oh.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I had this conversation, uh, email back and forth with Matthew and I still don't understand. Uh, it's on page one three eight, paragraph three point three. It says that we're going to encourage and probably require traffic coming out of the parking lot on the Old Litchfield Road to turn right and go past the lake into the city and not turn left and go to the traffic light in Indian School and out of the city. I thought that was backwards, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
Thank you. Yet originally there was the suggestion that, we're talking about the exit that goes on the, in the south Old Litchfield Road. There was the suggestion that we would make that a right out only because there was a concern of, of, uh, traffic backing up at this, at the concern of, of traffic backing up at this, at the traffic signal that is between South Old Litchfield Road and Indian School Road. We're concerned about traffic queue, the queue being too long and backing up. Conversations that I had with the city manager, I thought that was, that was backwards, that we really do want to encourage people to, to go out of the park and to use, to go left out of that driveway and, and to, and to use that traffic signal. And at one time, I don't, I'm assuming it's still here, but I don't know that it is, that there was a requirement that the developer would work with the city of Avondale and Goodyear to improve the timing on that light to eliminate any queuing that happened that was unreasonable in terms of backing up on Old Litchfield Road. Is that still in here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's still in the off-site, sir.
Okay, so this paragraph is, to the extent that it, it indicates that there's going to be only a right turn out and to encourage people to go north on Old Litchfield Road, it's incorrect. They're going to go right and left with the hope that, that people will want to go left and get out of the park, not drive down Old Litchfield Road, just unless they have, unless they have business to, they want to go down to the, to the city center or maybe they want...
Prince of, back at Prince of Litchfield Square.
Yeah, if there's, if there's a reason for it, but what we don't want to do is encourage people to drive down to Wigwam and then drive over Wigwam to get out on. I mean, and people do stuff like that.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, where, where are you referring to specifically in the language, Mr. Vice Mayor, so I can see it?
3.3, sir. 3.3, Mayor.
Okay, I see.
He's not going away, but he is.
Additionally, on page 19 of the development agreement, exhibit C outlined specifically, and it speaks to your comment, Mayor, on its item, exhibit C, Old Litchfield Road, item number three is...
Where are you at?
Uh, page 19 of 20 of the development agreement, exhibit C.
It's the, the off-site list, sir.
And then under Old Litchfield Road, item number three, mitigate traffic impacts on the intersection of Old Litchfield Road and Indian School Road at developers' cost by, and then there's two items that are required, A...
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I mean, when I read, when I read 3.3, I don't think it, it indicates that there is a prohibition about getting the cars, we want to give the cars the option to go left out of the, out of the development and get to the traffic light and then use the traffic, use that traffic signal to go either east or west on Indian School.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Thanks.
Mr. City Attorney, is that consistent with what the language is, is in here?
Can you restate the question?
So the, the concept, the concept is, or was, that the traffic coming out of this development and exiting onto Old Litchfield Road, that traffic could go either north or south.
Yeah, okay.
And that the developer is required to work on the traffic signal timing so that if the queue becomes too long because people are going south, that we try to mitigate that queue by, by timing of the traffic light.
Correct.
So we're not, we're, we're not prohibiting people from doing that, basically, from going to the south. This development agreement is not requiring the developer to, to actively prohibit people going south.
No.
That was not the desire.
No, and the section 3.3 is the traffic and parking studies, and it says the traffic study shall require precluding traffic from exiting onto eastbound Villanueva while allowing westbound Villanueva traffic to enter into the development.
That hasn't changed. It was just, we're not looking to preclude traffic from going south on Old Litchfield Road.
Correct.
Tom, if I may, last page on exhibit C, number 3A, it says working with city of Avondale to successfully modify the timing of existing traffic.
Right, I'm, I'm just concerned about 3.3 and whether, and the vice mayor is concerned that in some way we're, we're precluding people because of 3.3, we want to preclude people from going south, and we don't want to do that.
We don't want to do it, yeah.
So we want to make sure this language does not require that.
On 3.3?
3.3, that was, that's the, that's what the minds are about. This is about traffic study, so I don't think it does preclude it, but we want to make sure that if there's any indication or some plot that we are precluding it, that's not, that's not the intent.
If I could clarify, it was all pointed out to me, there was provision of that, that next sentence that was supposed to have been removed from, from the draft. Essentially, it says the traffic study.
Right, that's the part that I think the vice...
Part is, that part was removed.
The traffic study must also review capabilities. So that, and that's fine. It's that, it's the, it's viable alternatives that preclude traffic that I think the most fair. If 3 was supposed to be removed, all right. Vice Mayor, is that removing those words, does that clear up your concern?
Sorry, Mayor, was that a question to me?
Yeah, it, it sounds like we have, we have a topographical error in the, in the compilation of this agreement. And the words on 3.3 in the middle of the paragraph, the words, review viable alternatives that preclude traffic from entering southbound Old Litchfield Road, that that should not be in there. It was agreed that that would be taken out. We're not, we're not trying to preclude traffic from going south.
That, that's what I was hoping for, right?
Yeah, that's an error.
These churches, this parking lot hasn't been changed in decades and decades and decades. And it's been, it was a massively active church once upon a time, and John's Church right across the street, and that's massively active church. And I'm not aware of there being any problems with people getting out of there and backing up and congesting the city, trying to get out of, out of Litchfield Park, heading into Indian School Road. I would like to encourage that traffic to kind of then go that way and not go through the center, the center of town.
I think that was the concept. So we need to, we need to get that fixed. All right, that's, that's part of the, part of this consideration will be to fix that. Now, let's see, if there is councilman Donahue.
Well, I think I've been very public about the fact I've supported this project from the beginning, so I'm, I'm very glad to see it have reached this stage after this amount of time. I think we've all learned a lot. That condemnation project was, was studied by all of us, and it was very complicated. And we all chose, I think unanimously, not to go that route, which I think was the right one. I would be excited to see some vibrancy on that corner. I also like that we do have a citizen who is now that developer, just like we have that at city center. We have three acres by citizens that are being developed. I think that's very important because they care what the, the village is like. So there was a lot of emotion at the beginning of this. I think that there was misinformation, and I think then we cleared that up. So I just want to say that I, I think this would be a good bookend, and I continue to support this.
Councilman James?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just a, a few things just to beat the dead horse while we're on it. So to be clear, so the driveway modification in the northeast corner prohibits right turn traffic going into the community on Villanueva. Correct, okay. So that was a big issue of contention. That's, that's fixed. I saw it down in exhibit C when we were talking about Rye Road, the potential for the power pole having to get removed. Can you, somebody discuss, because I see that it's in there. What, what are we doing, what are we doing there? Is that, if, if the, if the power light has to get moved, we move it or? No. I don't think, we're not doing anything there.
Mayor, councilmember, the, that's related to... Exhibit C...
Yeah, number one under Indian...
Yeah, number one under Indian School Road, thank you. Relocation of utilities is required by the utility owner, including but not limited to relocation of existing power poles, relocate utilities as required. That's kind of a catch-all. You're correct, when we were discussing the Rye Row or the right in, right out driveway last year, that would have necessitated likely a very large 69 KV metal pole. Those are very expensive to relocate. That, we, we don't anticipate if the development agreement was approved that there would any, be any utility pole relocation, certainly not the 69 KV pole that I mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, next question. As it relates to the proposed occupants coming into there, how does it affect when church is in session? Do those businesses, are they open while church is in session? Because those, both of those congregations, as I noticed just last Sunday, the, the parking lot's full. In fact, cars park on the street. Is that addressed or how's that?
Mayor, Councilmember James, I might have the applicant come up and, and address that.
Yeah, the, we did a parking study with that, and basically, there's two things. One is, we plan to have the occupants in our retail building not active on Sundays. We've discussed all of that, to all of them, that they know that we are going to continue supporting the church on Sundays. So the uses that we have going in that building are the type that wouldn't be open on a Sunday.
And then, I think, last question would be, the, and I, like I said, I didn't really peruse all 20 pages of this to, to in detail, but the, that we had discussed the proposed additional building going on and the effects. And I know that traffic studies mentioned in there. Is there any further comments to be addressed on that or how that process would work at this time? Maybe not.
But my understanding is, is if, if we go to, if we come to the city to add a building, it would trigger us doing a new traffic study.
Okay. And going through all the, all the process of everything from design and review and up and everything after there.
Correct.
So nothing, okay.
Correct.
Then, then I think, you know, my last comment then just echoes what councilmember Donahue says. I think it's, you know, I've only been here for a year, but it's, it's been a long year watching this process. And even the six to eight months before, when I knew I was going to be on the council, coming to this and watching. So I, I, I want to commend both yourself and, and city for working this, and you have my full support, so. As, and that's not my full support, that's the support of what I hear from the citizens and people in the community. So I just want to congratulate you both for getting here. Thank you.
Thank you.
To answer the question that you had on, on the right in, right out, Mr. Hartman, the, it may be a difficult concept, but the idea is there's, there's a small strip of, of land that runs along the curb on Indian School, think of it a few feet wide, that has, you don't understand what an easement is. An easement gives you the right to drive on land. This easement is, is a prescription, prescription from driving on it. So along that strip of land, you are not, no one is permitted to drive across that strip with a car. And it is a right that, that accrues, originally, I had thought that it accrued to the property owners that were to the direct east of the Thomas Project. So the people who are just on the other side of the wall. Basically, it would protect them from vehicular traffic coming into that area. But we have multiple opinions from multiple attorneys that that prescriptive easement protects people all the way along its entire length. And so it looked like at the end of the day, we were looking at roughly 90 to 100 homeowners that we were sure had, were being protected by that prescriptive easement. So making a change to it by condemning a section to allow vehicular traffic to cross a section of that for that, for the right in, right out, condemning even that small piece of the prescriptive easement would have to go through a condemnation process in which the city would be required to sue every one of those homeowners. And there was no appetite on the council to do that. That it, there, within that group of 100 homeowners, some number of those homeowners support this project, while others, like you, do not support it, or want changes to it for things like this right in, right out. So we thought it was, it was a, you know, it was a, a taking of people's property that we just couldn't get behind, both because we didn't think it was potentially right to take someone's issue, you know, property, and also because it would involve suing that many of our residents that we just, and many of them, quite frankly, wouldn't even know why they're being sued. They wouldn't have any concept of what was trying to be done, and it would, it would be a, a real mess within, within the community. So we elected, as a council, there was just, there was just no support to go through and try to do a condemnation of any part of that prescriptive easement. And we, we worked with our attorneys to try to figure out if there was some way that we could otherwise, you know, get around that problem or resolve that problem without having to go through condemnation, and we could not find one. So happy to give it. So are there any more questions or discussion on this development?
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The, this is a point of order and confusion for me. This item is up for approval tonight, but we got some language we need to tweak. The next item on the agenda is to adopt an ordinance in support of this, but I don't think it's been introduced yet. So would the proper procedure be to maybe send the development agreement back to get the language tweaked right on entry onto Litchfield Road? And then maybe we, if there's a majority of council wants to, then we have the motion to adopt or to introduce this ordinance and see how the vote goes on, on that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, to your ordinance question, sir, the ordinance was introduced for, introductory reading in November, sir, the November council meeting.
Good, thank you.
Yes, it's already been introduced. So the, the problem we have is the, is the development agreement needs to be adopted in a correct format before we do the, the ordinance.
And that would just be a simple motion to adopt the development agreement with the change to paragraph 3.3 as discussed.
But we have to make sure that we have a valid agreement with the developer.
As discussed and agreed with, with the developer. And if you want, we can get Carolyn, if you would, just state for the record that...
The concern is that we want to have, we want to make sure the development agreement is in place before we adopt the ordinance.
Correct.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the form of agreement is put before you this evening and is subject to any modifications you might make. So your motion, and we would, as was mentioned, Brian has already signed the agreement, but that's not required. The development agreement has to be recorded by statute within 10 days of the council approval, which is yet to come. But we can make amendments to it anytime before you approve it. So this evening, just like if you wanted to make a revision to an ordinance, you could make a, a motion that includes the revision to section 3.3. The council at that point has approved that form of development agreement. We'll make that change. Brian will come in and sign it tomorrow, and it's a done deal.
My concern, and that's what I'm putting in, city attorney, that we have confidence that the developer is bound by the terms of this development agreement as we amended to take that language out.
Correct. And then if you want on the...
That, that's the concern. So yeah, I know, I know the concern's correct. Is, is the answer, that's what I want to know.
The concern is correct. And I think the, the best way to address that, if you want to, is when, when it comes to the ordinance, move to adopt the ordinance subject to the recording of the development agreement.
And Mr. Mayor, that's in there. That, that's in the ordinance already. That's, that requirement that the developer enter into the development agreement is actually in the next ordinance.
All right. Does that answer your question, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All right, is there a motion to, to approve the development agreement as amended in, in discussions tonight on Litchfield Road, Old Litchfield Road access to the south? Is there a motion to adopt or approve that development agreement?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just, and just to make it clear... Okay, just, and just to make it clear, that motion is, is clear enough so that we will get the development agreement amended consistent with what we've discussed tonight?
Correct.
So is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Was that an opposition, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Uh, no, that was a delayed aye.
Delayed aye, all right. Motion is, is adopted. Next item is to adopt ordinance 23 dash 277, I don't know, which has already been introduced. Motion, is there a motion to adopt that ordinance? Subject to recording of the development agreement with the modifications discussed tonight. Second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, on, on that one, if we could get a roll call vote with the ordinance?
We will. That's where I was going. Is there, is there anybody who wants to do a roll call vote? I think we all want to do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Faith.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Claire. Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Romack. Councilmember Brandon Watson. Mayor Shoup.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right. Moving on then to a new contract for city attorney services. And is this something that we need to do an executive session on? Or is this something that you want to discuss here?
No, Your Honor, we can discuss it here. In fact, the, the only thing that's agendized for an executive session is if you wanted some legal advice as to the legal advice.
Correct.
So.
We don't need to get any legal advice. Your legal advice.
But first I want to apologize. There is a, a proposed motion that was included in the packet and there, there is no proposed motion. There's no presumption as to council's decision on this item one way or the other. This item is coming up as a matter of course. I have made the decision to transition law firms from Gus Rosenfeld to Pierce Coleman. I feel it would, you know, for myself, it was the best decision. But I also felt it was a, a great decision for those clients of mine that wish to, to come with me and have me continue their work. With that said, the, the council has the, has three options. The council has the option of maintaining the legal work with Gus Rosenfeld, who has been doing the, the city's legal work for the last number of years through Susan when she was at Gus Rosenfeld. The option of being able to continue to have me do the, the legal work. Or you have a third option is you can go with a, an RFP or whatever you want and find a third party to do the legal work. So I, it's totally a, a council decision. I, I'm not here to convince council one way or the other. I, I enjoy working with each one of you. I enjoy working with staff. I think I've got a great relationship and would love to continue working with you. But I also know that Gus has expressed a desire to, to be able to continue to provide the legal services for the city. And also apologize for Austin and, and Andrew weren't available. They already had prior commitments for this evening. Just happened to be a, a timing issue from when, when I gave my notice and being able to get this on a council agenda prior to my departure at the end of the month. Because one of my main concerns with doing this was I, I was not going to do it in a time period before the freeholders finished up with the draft charter. Because there's no way I'm going to cause any, any hiccups or issues or concerns during a very short time period. But I, you know, I had this in my, my decision-making process for a number of months. That was the, the time period. So the 11th was really the, you know, the, the deadline that I imposed because that's when we were looking at finalizing that charter. And I'm glad we were able to get that done.
Yeah, and I'm going to take, I'm going to take questions or comments from council without, from council.
Yeah, from council.
About council. But I want to make a comment first. Joe, I think Joe's done a, a, a yeoman's job for us in his time serving us as the city, as a city attorney. He stepped into shoes that were very hard to fill because Susan had been here so long and had done such a great job for the council. He has come, you know, he has come a long way to providing that same level of service that Susan provided to us over the years. So I, my suggestion, my input is that we do two things. One is that we negotiate with, with Joe to produce a new contract with his new firm for his services as our city attorney. And that we continue the contract we have with Gus, at least for some period of time and maybe for a long period of time. Because there are some attorneys at Gus that have particular knowledge about specific things that we occasionally need. And so we would have the ability to go to Gus for those items. The one thing, and we've had some conversations with Gus about it. The one thing that they have requested, and I think it's a good idea, is that if we are going to have an agreement with Joe and his new firm, that the decision on where we go to take our legal services on a particular issue would be a decision that would be made by the city manager, not by the city attorney. So that we don't end up with having, asking Joe to make, you know, decisions that are potentially put him in a potential conflict, business conflict situation. So that's going to be my recommendation. But I would like to hear from the council on how you would like to proceed. Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'd first of all, like to thank you for staying with the freeholders. We greatly appreciated your insight and your assistance. You were invaluable to the process. And I would highly support your suggestion.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm going to step in the opposite direction. Joe, you've done a phenomenal job. I've got no problems with, with that. The services you provide have been top-notch. I have two issues. One, I, you know, it's the same issue. I struggle with the concept of somebody leaving a firm and taking the firm's clients with them. I also struggle with the concept of somebody while they were employed by somebody else going to those customers, those clients, attempting while they're in that employment to sway them to leave the, that person's employer's firm and to go to another firm with them. And I think you might want to check the ethical obligations with that, that approach. There, there are some issues with doing that while you're employed.
And I, I'm going to tell you, I was in, in a meeting with Joe in which he announced his decision to leave. And I believe that was the first meeting or the first time that it was discussed at the city at all. In fact, he asked me to come in and have a meeting with him. And we set up a particular time at city hall to do this. He did not solicit the business of the city. He notified us that he was going to be changing firms. He gave us some reasons for why he was going to change firms. But he did not solicit our business going forward. The, the indication, indication that we would consider that was something that I made and I think the city manager seconded, that we would like to continue, potentially continue the relationship. And what we would need to know is more information. We specifically talked about more information about the firm he was going to and what the billing rates were going to be, you know, in this, if there would be a new contract negotiated. So at this point, this point, there has been no solicitation on his part for us as a, as a continuing client. The only thing that we've discussed is if council is willing or desires to go forward with a potential relationship, that he would work on bringing us a proposal from this new firm so that we can consider it. So I, I don't think he's violated any, you know, any ethical rules. And I do, I do understand the sensitivity of, of an attorney when they leave a firm. There's always a very delicate dance around what, what happens with the clients. And it's, it's, it's one of those important economic activities that is, it's not an easy dance for the attorney that's leaving to, to get the, to get his footwork quite, you know, absolutely perfect. But I, I can tell you from the time that I spoke with him, there was no, there was no indication that he was soliciting our business. He was simply informing us that this is going to happen. And, you know, if you're interested in this, in me continuing, I will get you a proposal.
And I, I would echo what the mayor said. This, even right now, is not a solicitation. This is just informing the council that I will be leaving Gus and joining Pierce Coleman and that the council has the three options, how to address that transition of, of what I've decided to do. So it is totally a council decision and as it always is. It's a council decision on a daily basis as to who you have as your designated appointed city attorney. And the council also has the option, as the mayor said, is always having outside counsel, other counsel, do other work. We do that on a regular basis, not only with Litchfield Park, but with just about every other municipality.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
So, I mean, in my opinion, I think what we as a city do is develop a relationship with the lawyer. Certainly they belong to a bigger group. I don't know if there's a do not compete clause that you signed when you sign on with a lawyer, with a law firm. But here's my only other question is, how long then do we sign on with Gus and for, for, you know, the, the other thing? Just a what?
We can terminate at any time.
Okay.
It's really easy. We just.
And we only, we, we basically pay to play with them, right? You pay them when, when you use them?
If it works for you, you can pay them for their hours if they, they work.
But I, I will say, because Susan was obviously here a long time and for Joe to replace her was a very hard thing to do and he's done a great job, I think. So I think our relationships with Joe and certainly support.
At this point, it's just a matter of we, if Joe wants to bring us a proposal, then are we open to considering that proposal? And making the decision on how we want to go, etc. It's not any action tonight other than bring us a proposal back from your new firm and we'll take, and we'll take a look at it.
And I can tell you that the, the proposal, there, there will be no changes to, to what, what is current and what will be proposed. It'll be a, if, if council chooses, it will be an absolute seamless transition with regard to a change in a name on a business card.
And I, I don't think it's a, a matter of the council making any decision until we see a written, a written fee agreement that you take to the, you know, you take it to the city manager and go through the process of negotiating the fee agreement. And then he'll bring it to us and we'll, we'll make, I think that's when the council needs to take action.
Okay.
So in, in timing, it sounds as though, Joe, you have, before our next meeting in February, you will move on to your new firm. So, uh, legal services for the February meeting?
We can have a special meeting if you're concerned about that. If, you know, if you want to not, if, if we don't have a special meeting, then we would have to use, we'd have to use Gus. Gus for that, you know, for that meeting. It just depends on when we consider the contract. Is that, I'm not comfortable considering the contract tonight when it's not, we don't have a written fee proposal. And we need to see that and understand exactly what it says. And then, once we have that, then it's a matter of making a decision, which I've told you, what I, I think my decision will be unless there's something crazy in the fee agreement. My preference is to go down the path with the new firm, but to retain Gus for items that we may need. And, you know, if for some reason we are not happy with, you know, with the new firm and the experience with the new firm, we can go back to Gus and we have flexibility.
So no action today?
I think other than just direction to staff to, you know, to work on a fee agreement. If you desire, if you, if you want to go forward and bring us a fee agreement, which I think he does and I'm sure he will. Any other comments from any other council? Mr. Vice Mayor, any comments?
I have nothing. Thank you.
So I, I think the direction of council is clear. I don't know that we need to, any kind of a motion to do this. We, we, we just need you to, you know, you, we need your new firm to bring us a fee agreement. You know, bring it to Matthew, negotiate it. I'm fine with that. We have the first Wednesday every month to do that, to do those kinds of things anyway. And so it's fine to go ahead and schedule something, you know, for the first Wednesday, which will be a couple of weeks from now when we can take care of it.
Absolutely. I'd appreciate it.
Consideration to figure it out. Everybody on the council agree with that? We're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think.
I'd like to say that I, I agree with Vice Mayor. And when you leave, you don't necessarily try to take your clients with you to the next place. I, but I, I do think that Joe has earned all this time and job. But I, I won't.
And I would voice counter opinion on that because I've actually encountered this situation with a financial advisor and a physician, both of whom left a practice or a, a group and took clients with them. Gave clients the opportunity to follow them. And that was, I think, what the, the way it was worded, that you didn't take your clients, but you informed them where you were going.
Right.
And it was their, your decision. So it is, it is a question.
Universal problem every time when the attorney changes firms.
Well, the way Joe explained it too and clarified it to me.
Absolutely.
I own you as a client. You, you, as an attorney, you choose to be your attorney. Have counsel of your choice and, you know, that's what.
Vice Mayor.
Your story.
Yes, yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Terry, just for future reference, Joe's microphone doesn't work. It cuts out in and out and I've not heard much of what he said at all.
I'm sorry, whose microphone?
Joe's.
Joe's. Thank you.
Joe, have it on?
Aye.
It's all new.
Apologize. I stopped for Matthew.
So is there anything you, you'd still like to get from Joe? And we'll give him a different mic to speak on. Is there any questions or something else you want, you want to hear from him?
Not me. No, thank you.
What's that?
Vice Mayor, no, not me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this topic? If not, then is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you for your attention. Well, we can have one if you need one.